Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 12th, 2018. It is seven o'clock. I call this first meeting of March to order. My name is Jeff Matthews, and I am the Town Council President. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. I would also like to welcome those that are with me here this evening. Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Counselor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
Vice President David Lindsay.
Good evening.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
Town Manager Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening, Speedway.
Our Clerk Treasurer, Money Combs.
Good evening.
And our Legal Counsel, Bob Clutter.
Howdy-do.
The agenda has been posted, and we are going to follow that this evening. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes dated February 26, 2018. Those have been distributed. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, those will be approved as presented. Items three and four, memorandums of two executive sessions, one being the Town Council and one being a joint session with the Speedway Redevelopment Commission. We're waiting back for some information on those two, so we'll approve those at the next meeting. Is that appropriate, Legal Counsel?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Item number five, Citizen of the Month. We'd like, Jacob, would you like to present the Citizens of the Month Award?
Do you want me to go up there?
You can do it from there and then head up that direction.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Best camera angle, too.
Oh, thank you. Good advice. I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing someone who does quite a bit in our community for Citizen of the Month this year. I got in touch with this individual when I was sort of first initially getting involved and active in the community through Housing Advisor Council of the Community Development Corp. And this gentleman was on that and is one of the founding members, I believe, of that group. And I since, you know, learned that he has so much more in the community as well, and he does it very quietly. And he happened to live right next door to me. And this month, I get to recognize Tom Fanzler. If you could stand up here for us. The whole point of this award is to kind of recognize people who do a lot in our community but don't always get the recognition. They're just quietly, sort of, in the background, doing things, doing whatever needs to be done. And Tom does that, and the Lions Club, of course. And just through CDC Projects and other, you know, something needs to be done, and the next thing you know, Smock Fanzler Struck is showing up, and it's getting done, and the work's happening. So, and like I said, you never know. I mean, he doesn't say anything about it, it just, things get done. And it's important to have folks like that in the community and to recognize them. So, on behalf of the Town, this Speedway Chamber, I'd like to recognize you, Tom, and it looks like they have a gift card to Dawson's for you.
Wonderful. Well.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, can we get a picture real quick?
Keep Mr. Fanzler up there, if you would, for a second. He wanted up there, a lot of you.
Olin Mills over here is gonna take your picture.
(laughing). Got it. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Tom, very much. Anyone would like to?
Absolutely. You're not going. Come back up here.
Go ahead.
No, somebody else, please, first. Mr. Fanzler, please come back up to the podium. This, you are so deserving of being recognized as a Citizen of the Month. Your commitment to this community, you know, I'm a, like many, most of us here, many of us, you know, the influence you've had on our community goes so deep, so broad. It's amazing. I think back to being on a park board, and you, not single-handedly, but you saying, "Okay, I'll make sure we get the pavilion built in Meadowwood." Going back before that, before we re, you know, developed master plan for our parks, remember sitting down with you over a cup of coffee, and you're saying, you know, "These are some possibilities on what we could do in our parks." And, you know, those came true. And I look back to being a boy and being similar-aged, right, actually in between your two sons, Tom and David, and just the character that you've always displayed. I compare you to Tony Dungy. And I can do that because I, and I didn't know you were gonna be awarded this, so just to be clear, I, like, this is a great thing for you to be recognized. Because I was saying to Jeff earlier, years I would go to a restaurant up on 71st Street, and you're probably still there once a week, with a group of men involved in a Bible study, leading other men. And just, I watched you lead by example. Quiet, but just tremendous leader in your business, be it, you're not out there grandstanding, and, you know, you're a soft-spoken man, but you get so much done. And, you know, I know probably a dozen people that have worked for you in your company, and they've all done well. And you run a union company, and you never seem to have any problems with your employees. I'm sure you do, I'm sure, like all employers have challenges, but in this day where we always hear of battles that go on between employers and employees, and with or without unions, I never hear any problems in your company. I just hear people proclaiming what a good boss you are and what a good leader you are. And just from my perspective, it's great to have you recognized, and I'm sorry we've taken this many years to do that.
Well, I appreciate, very much appreciate the award. Nancy and I got married in 1960, moved to Speedway in 1962, bought a house on Eisenhower Drive, and we lived there, moved in 1968, I think on the hottest day in August, moved up on West 29th Place, and we've been there ever since. But we've, Speedway has such a good history for its educational, for education. And I feel our kids have got really good, really good teaching there. And the values, by and large, for the people in the town of Speedway are much higher than you find in almost anyplace else. I'm very thankful that the Lord placed us here and has been good to us. And my son, David, my second son, retired the end of March, and he's living in Florida, so we have a place to go visit now without having to pay the high price. But he put his house up for sale on a Friday, and a guy came in and bought it on Saturday, and they weren't ready to move, so he came in and moved with us, and lived with us for about three months before they could get to Florida. But Nancy, my wife, has been, she's involved in so many different activities with different women's groups and that type of thing. And we've been active in the Methodist Church for 60 years, I suppose. And it's just a comfortable town to be in. Not surprises, we've always had good neighbors. And we used to have neighborhood picnics. We haven't had many of those in years, so I hate to see that. It'd be nice to bring some of that back. Thank you so much for recognizing me, and I'm just one cog in the wheel, and we've got a lot of spokes in our wheels, so, God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you.
From one great point to the next, so item number six, Speedway War Memorial Update is, there he is, Steve Ersmann.
Hi. I'm Steve Ersmann with the Speedway War Memorial Foundation, and today was a red-letter day for us. For those of you who were there, Jacob and Gary, we did our groundbreaking this morning about 10:30. We actually started this project in March of 15, and it's March of 18, so we're ready to go. Within the next 10 to 14 days, you should see that property be leveled. Ray's will take care of that. And Santa Rosa Tile is already fabricating the monument. So if everything goes well, probably dedicated on Memorial Day this year. And if anybody wants to buy bricks, they're still available.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Any questions?
If someone wants a brick, Steve, do they contact you?
Yes, they can go to the Facebook page, and there's actually a form up there, they can just get it, and all the information's on there where to send it, or they can give me a call. Phone number's on there, too.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, I'd like to say thank you. Steve, you and the other members of the Foundation, the War Memorial Foundation have done a terrific job. If you'd take a second, maybe introduce those folks, but I just want to thank you for the work you've done. I know, you know, a year ago, we thought we had that property purchased, and the owner of the property, their parent company, made it a little, a few more hurdles, more like a pole vault we had to get over, and between Town Manager and Redevelopment Commission and others that stepped in to help, ultimately it worked out. I know there were some doubters in the community whether we could get it done, but you guys have worked really hard, so thank you for that. Who's on your foundation?
I think Jacob coming to us was, you know, coming from AES, he knew who to talk to.
Right.
And that made it happen.
Who's on your foundations?
On the board is Don and Trish Stockoff, Andy Campos, Paul Nordmeyer, and Tim Kanu.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Steve, for everything.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, requests for road closure on Saturday, April 14th, by the Speedway Junior Baseball and Softball for their opening day parade. And I believe Jennifer Outlaw is here to speak on their behalf.
Jennifer Outlaw, I'm with the Speedway Junior Baseball and Softball League, and I'm just here on the behalf of the league requesting, like you said, street closures on the morning of Saturday, April 14th, from 8:30 until about 10:00 a.m. We're requesting, I've actually already spoken with the fire and police departments to tell them about the date, and they've both agreed, once it was approved, that they will be helping us again this year. And I don't know if it's necessary, but I did bring a map for closures, if anyone would like to see it. But basically, what we're requesting...
Thank you.
Is closure, where the staging area would be down at Worth and 15th Street, so at the west end of the park. The closure would begin approximately 8:30 a.m. and for staging of the teams. And it would be 15th Street to, basically to Lynnhurst. And what would happen is that the kids would walk down the street from 15th and Worth down, basically, to this intersection right here in front of the church and go into the east field. And it probably wouldn't be until, actually, 10 o'clock. It would probably be about 9:30, but just to be safe.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the road closure for Speedway Junior Baseball and Softball on April 14th.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for road closure on Saturday, April 14th, from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes 5-0.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, agreement with Ben Davis Conservancy District. Do you want to take this?
Conservancy District, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. So, the Ben Davis Conservancy District is a wastewater collection area that approached the town about the summer of last year, asking about the possibility of leasing space from us, from the town and town-owned property that is by our wastewater plant right now. And we've kind of had some ongoing conversations and kind of agreed to some high-level terms. At this point, to keep that process moving forward, they need kind of signal from us that we are serious about moving forward, so that they can start lining up their financing and start getting the right permits and that sort of thing. So what we're asking for approval for tonight is not a lease, but an option-to-lease agreement. So it's pretty thin, as you'll notice in your packets. There's not, there's certainly details that need to be ironed out before we move forward, but this is a signal to Ben Davis Conservancy District that we are serious. And I think this would be a good project for both parties. It allows them to reduce some costs, it allows the town to utilize space that currently is not very well utilized. There's only so many places that want to go next to our current wastewater plant, so I think it's a, it's a good project. Again, some details to iron out, but we'd like your approval on this option-to-lease agreement. Any questions?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agreement with what was just stated by the Town Manager.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with the BD/CD. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from the council?
More of a clarification, and we had some conversation about this, and again, get it out publicly. The, somewhat of a memorandum of understanding, it basically gives them the option to negotiate in great detail, so it doesn't lock us into the actual lease, but it gives us, them the opportunity to get into detail with us.
Right. And it, you know, we're saying that we're gonna negotiate in good faith to move forward, and like I said, it allows them to kind of take next steps on their side. It also involves a $5,000 payment from them to us to secure the option to utilize that space if they would, if we would decide to move forward with it.
And this whole landfill space is...
This whole landfill space by our wastewater plant, right.
It's not really suitable for a lot of things, so this is a great one.
This is, exactly. They would be a good partner in this project.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Item number nine, Resolution 2018-04, Resolution Concerning Contribution to IPL Streetlight Improvement Project. Jacob?
Yes. So Indianapolis and IPL announced with a lot of fanfare when they reached an agreement to convert the lights from the existing lights to a more efficient and easier-to-maintain LED street lighting structure. Like I said, they made a big announcement, and essentially, because they're going to be buying so much of this equipment, they have approached the other smaller communities within their district to see if they would also be interested in doing the conversion at the same rate and cost that Indianapolis has negotiated. So we've been approached to see if we would like to do this. The financial analysis works out very favorably. It's an under-10-year payback period for us, and it also, we can essentially kind of put up the funds to do this now while we're buying all the equipment and get in at the same time that Indianapolis and the other communities are doing it, or we can pay more for the LED conversions going forward without doing the contribution, which is more expensive and starts to get your payback period more like around five years. So it's a good project. We do have a representative from Indianapolis Power and Light, and before he gets up here, we talked a little bit about IPL and the War Memorial. This is an individual who helped us get the project done, so let's not beat up him. This is Justin Soufan, ladies and gentlemen, and he was certainly one of the contacts that helped us to move forward on acquiring the main street property, unrelated to the LED lights, but I just thought I would mention it as he comes up. So it's a good project financially, it's an improved light and lighting. And Justin, I don't know if you have some brief remarks about the program and kind of how it's going in other communities?
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks for having us here tonight. Jacob, I think you put it very well. So the idea here is to take advantage of the scale that comes with the procurement of 30,000-plus fixtures that the city of Indianapolis is moving forward with. So as Jacob mentioned, we're approaching the other towns within our service territory, giving them the opportunity to take advantage of basically the schedule and also the pricing that we're getting with this large purchase. So the idea here is leveraging scale. Some, you know, Jacob mentioned the payback. Also, specifically with Speedway, you have different intersections where you have Indianapolis city-owned lights and then Speedway lights, so, you know, the city of Indianapolis lights will be converted. If you guys go on the same schedule, you'll have the opportunity to have consistency, so you won't have different colors of lights. Obviously, with LED, the lighting is a little bit more bluer rather than yellow. There's a lot of efficiency to be had with LED lights as well. And I also brought an example of what the fixture looks like. I'm happy to show that to anybody who has questions about what, you know, what the fixture change looks like. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the payback, or just any questions you might have about schedule, and why now is probably a better time to do it than later.
I'd also mention, I forgot, the high school has made the conversion, and, you know, they're seeing a lot of savings. We've seen it on a smaller scale with some of our facilities, and we've kind of tested it out. So it's not, I mean, the technology is very far along, it's not kind of pie in the sky. You might save some money. It works out both, again, in terms of reducing electricity consumption, and your maintenance is lower because they last a lot longer.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 2018-4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-04. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Any additional from council?
You said you have an example of it.
Yeah.
For the thousands watching at home?
Sure.
As I like to say.
Every meeting, Dave looks for an opportunity to talk about the thousands that watch.
It's pretty heavy, but if you guys want to take a look. Just a little bit more of a slimmer profile. You can see the LED here. Because it's a different bulb type, we have to change the fixture.
Show it to that camera right there.
There we go.
Or, yeah, use the camera right there in front of you.
So Jacob, this is, while they're putting that on the camera, this is for all the main streets. What about side streets? Is that...
These are all the streets.
All the streets?
Streetlights in the community.
And what about the lights in, like, the park and things? Is it covering that, too, or...
I'd actually maybe have to ask Wendell on that. How mu, I mean, I know that it's certainly the streetlights. It's basically the lights that are owned by Indianapolis Power and Light, so I don't think that it includes the parks, but I don't know if one of you could do that.
Sure.
While we're, the main street, 10th Street, the roundabout project, those are town-owned lights. We are looking and converting those, but everything else in town, all the streets will be upgraded to these. We will work with them on the parks to do those, since they are lights that we lease from them. So during this program, we'd like to look at doing those at the same time, too.
Just one quick question, too. You'd mentioned, I think you'd mentioned, a little bit about timing. Do we have any idea when installation might begin?
Yeah, so it'll be over a three-year process.
Okay.
So we could, we will start as early as this year, 2018, and it'll be phased in over three years. Just, again, the opportunity to take advantage of the scale is to do it in a schedule where we'll do our whole service territory, so, you know, as the city of Indianapolis lights are touching the town of Speedway, it would all be done around that same schedule.
Excellent. Any other questions?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
The, there's a cost we pay upfront.
Correct.
But what you're saying, the cost savings in the end from switching to these will pretty much, I don't know if it'll pay for itself, but...
Yeah, so Jacob mentioned the payback, I think, for your specific situation is less than 10 years, but by my count, it's less than eight.
About eight years.
Correct. So with the efficiency, your electric bill will not be as high because it's not using as much energy.
Okay. What's the planned life of this, these products?
So the planned life for a brand-new LED fixture is about eight to 10 years, but again, with your rate, that includes ongoing maintenance, and when the bulb burns out, you know, that's included within your rate, so...
And beyond that, what do we do? Because 10-year...
Correct, so...
10-year less ROI, so what's the...
That's right, so we will, as long as you continue paying the rate, we will continue servicing that light.
Which is how it works right now.
Okay.
So we're also capturing some savings from them not having to come out as frequently to replace the lights in units.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes 5-0. Item number 10, Approval of Claims and Utility Adjustments. Money?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for filling in for me a couple weeks ago.
You're very welcome.
I enjoyed watching that.
It was fun to do.
TV, and as I coughing, and, you know, all those kind of things that went wrong with bronchias, but great job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tonight's claims are for February 24th through March the 9th. I sent things out on Friday, but this is a revised one for you, and everyone's gotten one. There was something we found, a glitch on some of our credit card payments. You were just seeing a bank statement instead, or not bank statement, but banks, instead of what was purchased under that card. And these show you what was actually purchased on the card, so some of those things might bring questions. And they don't specifically say that, but I can, you can see it in certain ways. So with that, I'd ask for your approval, please.
Mr. President, I move we approve the claims presented to us by the Clerk Treasurer.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council?
Two have one question. Page three, Globe Asphalt Paving, related to 25th Street Patching. I don't recall the detail of this, just asked you to look into something. Years, a few years ago, when we had that street repaved, I believe we had a settlement with the paving company as their work was not up to the standard that we expected. It's near the top of the page three.
How far to the page three? Maybe I'm on the wrong.
$19,584.
I don't have mine.
It's okay. So I just, my point would be to ask...
Oh, global, okay.
We had a settlement.
I finally got there, yeah.
We had a settlement, and I believe that was, the road was paved on bond, and I don't know all of those dollars if we spent them on other road improvements, but I'm wondering if we can pay for this patching out of some of those funds that came back.
Wendell, you're aware of this probably better than I am exactly on this 25th Street packing with Globe.
Yes. On 25th Street, we did go through a time of, we had some problem areas. We did do a settlement with the company, and everything worked out. We worked with their engineering company at that time on that project, got everything worked out. I can't remember the year, this was done 2010?
2013.
2013. So we had some failure on a place of concern up by the library, so we scheduled with Globe. We went out and got quotes, brought it to you for approval and everything, so that's what it is. We had some tracking, where everybody runs in one area that we had a failure, so we had to go back and repair those.
Yeah, thank you. Just, it's not something I think you can answer now, but if there are any funds left from that settlement to pay for this, instead of coming out of 18 budget?
I don't think that's all been spent down, because we just moved those dollars into other projects throughout the years and stuff, and kept our footage increasing.
Thank you, sure.
Any other questions regarding claims? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Appreciate it very much. The utility adjustments, you also have that. Little more volume here than we've had lately, but still, things we have to take care of at times. And a lot of it was generated more because of the estimate we had to do during the super cold weather, and it's kind of caught up with us, and some of those adjustments have to be made. So, again, same period of time, February 24th through March the 9th, and appreciate your approval on that as well.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the utility adjustments as presented by our Clerk Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the utility adjustments as presented. Are there any questions from the audience? Any from council? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Passes 5-0. Money, do you have anything else to report?
It's one of the, one of the two times a year we have to worry about liens that we have to file on our sewers that aren't paid, and again, the high 90-some percent outside of the actual town. And we started with the, with the letters we send them, pre-liens, started with 509 letters, and about half of those got paid, was about 100, just at $100,000, and then we actually had to put liens at $55,000 worth of that for the spring property tax payments that'll be done. So we had to go down that path. One of the things, as far as, I was watching on YouTube a couple weeks ago, there were four others there joining me at the time.
That's great.
That wasn't a big lot.
Because you weren't there.
No, I wasn't there. I'm sure, it was nothing. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just proves my point, Monty.
I know. I kept looking for more zeros in the back, but it just never happened.
Did you see us grab our earlobe? We were saying hi and get well.
Well, it was one of those few times I'd rather have been here than there.
Right.
We're glad you're feeling better.
Yeah. Thanks, Monty.
Thank you.
Reports from our department supervisors. Tim Gropp with our economic development. Tim?
Good evening, counsel. Just a couple of things from me this evening, real quick. You might have noticed over the weekend, the Willshaw project started going vertical with the first elevator shaft. So we're excited to see that and that should continue moving. I believe all the footers are done on the north apartment building and they'll, most of them are done on the south as well. So you should see more progress there. We actually have an organizational meeting with the hotel, which is going to start probably in April. So we're going to sit down with the hotel construction and the apartment construction to make sure everything's smooth. It is going to add quite a few cars in there, so we're working on where we're going to be parking everybody during that time. Make sure we stay off of Main Street as best, they're not supposed to be on Main Street parking at all. So if you do see that, please let us know so we can address that. They've been really good at actually addressing those issues when they come up, so. But we need to be aware of it so we can follow up on that as well. So we're excited to see the hotel kickoff as well and everything seems to be right in line for that project right now. One other note, I get a lot of questions about the, what I call the Zelman Lot, which is the lot next to Pam's liquor stop there. It is pretty torn up right now. We had torn down the building and there were some environmental cleanup that needs to take place. So that's in the process of getting approval through, that's not being done by us, that's being done by the, the current owner that we're buying it from. It's in the process of going through insurance claims and everything else. So hopefully that'll get, we've pushed them to say we need to have that lot done by the end of April to be able to be used during May. So hopefully we'll see some of that environmental cleanup happen soon and then we can come in there and clean that lot up so it looks good and presentable for May. So just wanted to give everybody an update on that. Any other questions?
So on that Willshaw, where are the contractors supposed to be parking?
Well, right now, they can all fit on-site where the, where the actual parking lot will be. When we get the other, the other group, it gets a little tighter because they'll use the triangle lot, which, which is adjacent to Speedway, will be staging. So you'll see that get fenced off and it'll be staging for, for all the material for the hotels. So they're working, they have requests into IMS, see if on non-event times they can use some of that gravel lot just on the other side of Speedway. If that doesn't work, we'll work with lots that we own on Northside, Zelman and Bodre to try and park them in there.
What about for the month of May?
Month of May, that's part of what our organization meeting is, is going to be, is to figure out where we can put them, what days. It won't be as heavy early on when they're doing the, the foundation, so May shouldn't be that big an issue. It's when they start going vertical and you start getting electricians and HVAC and masons and everything else at once that you could have 150-plus people working on that hotel all at one time. So along with the apartment. So for May, we should be able to cover it. Obviously, we'll make sure that they're not working during the race weekend and coordinate all that. But we'll have that meeting coming up, I think it's in a couple of weeks here, possibly even next week, and then get that all worked out.
I'll mention it now and maybe when our assistant police chief comes up, he can address the issue. But I've sent a picture of someone parking on Main Street construction over the weekend. I know we have our staff that works typically Monday through Friday for enforcement. If we could look into the issue.
Yeah, we'll.
Where they park on the weekends as well.
We'll address that tomorrow. I, I just was made aware of that this evening. So we usually have pretty good turnaround. They've been actually really good at addressing those issues. I don't think we were aware they were going to be working on the weekend. I was pretty surprised to see the elevator shaft up when I went down Main Street today, so.
Yeah, the second point I was going to make is kind of exciting to see that elevator shaft. And then when you go west on, on Crawfordsville Road or Holm Memorial Way and you look over Goodwill and that shopping center, you now see the top floor of the Marriott Courtyard that you couldn't see before. So to me, it's pretty exciting to see that progress.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Thank you, Ken. Next up is a report from our police department. Assistant Chief Chuck Upchurch, please.
As you can tell, Chief Campbell's out of town for the, he was out of town for the weekend. He's in Michigan for his annual trip to Blossom Time Festival where he's a judge. So I'm sure he appreciates me letting you know that. I have provided each of you with a copy of our 2017 annual report from the police department. Just as a brief synopsis, 2017, our officers responded to 23,054 incidents. They affected 1,488 arrests, issued 6,385 traffic citations, 759 warnings, and they investigated 550 vehicle crashes. As far as the uniform crime report, which is what we report to the FBI, I'm happy to report that all of our crime categories, with the exception of assault and battery, were all down. And assault and battery was up just slightly. We reported 100 back in 2016. And last year, we had 104. So the police department also graduated the, the eighth citizens academy class last year and the third student academy class. The second item would be the community shredded day, which this year is going to be scheduled for April the 21st. Once again, it'll be held in the Speedway Police Department parking lot from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That will also entail a narcotics or prescription drug drop. And they will take electronics for those that need to get rid of electronics from their home. I do believe there's a charge now for the electronics. I think it's $10, so, which is still a pretty good rate because most people won't take electronic, especially TVs with tubes in anymore. So, and that's all I have.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Good evening, counsel. Just a couple of things before I get into something that I wanted to share with all of you. We have our second fire planning meeting for IMS events for this summer. All the agencies have returned from Marion County again, and we'll be utilizing every fire department in Marion County again this year, including Beech Grove and City of Lawrence to help us with those events. So that's actually just the second year that that's happened. So we're, we're happy to say that. Our guys are halfway through the academy and we're not sure when the graduation day is going to be with the fire academy, but probably the first or second Friday in May. They haven't given us, they're looking for the, for the venue. There's five firefighters from Wayne, two from Speedway, and 40 from Indianapolis. So they're thinking somewhere here on the west side. It might be at the Pike Fine Arts where it was before, or they're looking at Vin Davis. So the other thing, I asked the cable network if they would put up on the screen a certificate from the traffic incident management effort, the in-time management effort. I want to read you just a short statement that was read by a committee of the Health and Hospital of Indiana, the Department of Health, the State Police, and NDOT. This isn't an award that they give out just every month. This is an award they give out for incidents managed. And this is, this is absolutely a town award. It is not a fire department award, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. So I want to read this to you. "The emergency response incident that occurred October 5, 2017 was significant for all the opposite reasons an incident like this is usually significant. The cause of the incident was nothing abnormal, a leaking tanker truck spilling a petroleum product on the roadway. This scenario is the most common hazard scenario in Marion County. It occurs hundreds, if not thousands, of times a year. Numerous agencies and contractors responded to this incident, which was also not significant. Several major roadways were impacted, I-465, 10th Street, Lynnhurst, Holt Road. An industry was involved in the form of Heritage Crystal Clean. Everything about this incident on the surface seemed common. However, the most uncommon thing occurred. Number one, early detection and excellent size seen up by the agencies of the town of Speedway identified the major issue and accurately identified the potential impact. Number two, excellent communication by the town of Speedway notifying all interested agencies early and accurately. This includes state agencies, county agencies, and our private partners. Number three, proactive action were taken quickly and decisively by the town of Speedway to address these issues. Number four, an incident command system, unified command structure was set up early and without issue of jurisdiction. And most importantly, an overall attitude by the town of Speedway to do what was right, to protect the benefit of the residents of Speedway by going so greatly, by doing so, greatly reducing the impact of this incident." So all of that to say, every department in the town was affected. And, you know, Battalion Chief Hartman was the incident commander. Wendell was on the scene. They had a unified command there. Jacob was watching and just learning. You know, Chief, Chief Campbell and Chief Upchurch went to the scene after Captain Deardorff had, had also, they set up a unified command system in the parking lot, I believe, of, was it Muggan Bun? Muggan Bun. You know, we had local and other agencies helping. So I just wanted to bring it to the, to the citizens' attention that this isn't something they give out. And the gentleman that gave it said he has been a part of maybe thousands of these incidents. And he would say it was the top five in how it was responded to. Came in at approximately 3:00 and the roadway was reopened by?
Seven?
Eight o'clock. So, you know, spilling a product all the way from 465 down to Holt Road, it just, it really was neat to, to get recognized for something. And it takes them a while to get that nomination process going, but it was something good that we can all take a lot of pride in. So just wanted you guys to be aware of that. That's all I have.
Well, that was, real quick, that was well organized and well orchestrated by every department. I know, I travel 10th Street about that time every day. And for you guys to get it cleaned up during the, the heat of the day, when, when we're talking, you know, rush hour home, you guys did fantastic.
Well, you know, police getting trafficked, going in the right direction. Our, our mutual aid with Wayne Township's hazmat unit who came in and listened to what, you know, Wendell was saying. Having Battalion Chief Hartman, who already trusts Wendell's judgment when it comes to an incident like that with his background, and all of our agencies just seamlessly, you know, getting every sewer inlet, you know, covered so that product couldn't get into the sewer system. Norm was notified, you know, at that time Steve was notified. It just, it was really, really kind of neat to see something like that come together and then us to be recognized for it, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thanks, Bob. Next up, Public Works Director Wendell Walters.
Good evening, counsel. Just to remember, I'm reporting for three or four different departments now, so be patient with me. I'll try and get everything covered quickly for you. We'll start out on our local projects. The BNO project has started. You've seen some activity up on 11th and Main. IPL has removed the power poles, that's been requested on that project. They are now staked out for the entire project to get silt fencing in right away cleared. So you'll see a lot of activities, it's already started and continued throughout. This project is supposed to be completed by September 1st. Talking with the contractor, we're probably going to be ahead of the schedule, so that's a positive. So you'll see a lot, a lot of activity on the old BNO trail bed. Then on our 2018 milling and resurfing project, our concrete work will start next week. We will be giving out notice to the homeowners on driveway approaches, curb repair, parking restrictions, no parking, moving people back and forth across the streets to get this project up and going. The concrete work itself throughout the project, take about five to six weeks. The asphalt company will move in after that and start doing the milling and paving. They're talking two to three days after concrete releases it to them. Just real quick information, we'll have a door hanger that will be placed out for notification to the residents. It has our phone number on it and also has the contractor's phone numbers on it. So if there's any concerns or complaints or anything that you need information on, give us a call and we'll try and get an answer for you. Okay, the big thing on the street department side, yardway starts April 3rd. I know a lot of people's got stuff stacked up and waiting on us, so crews will be there, our driver will be there, and we'll get started, we'll start the season. So we'll be out there. On the water department side, our crews are out doing main, our repairs where we've had broken mains over the years. They're doing the dirt work back, the concrete work back, and we are contracting out the asphalt for the repairs. So everything is in works down there to get everything buttoned back up, streetwise, sidewalk-wise, and dirt-wise. The plant maintenance is ongoing. They're getting ready to bring the surface plant online, so they're doing maintenance cleanup on that. They also, IDM has paid a visit to their plant. They are reviewing our manning of the plant. We had put in a request to be unmanned at certain hours, so they're reviewing all that. They had some technical questions. Mary jumped on and answered those quickly for them. So hopefully we'll be getting an answer back on that. And as far as the SRF projects, all the companies involved in that and our engineering surface has been working on that and we should be getting movement on those projects. That's the water tower, the SCADA system, some, some security issues at the plant that will get addressed during that time. Take a breath there.
Would you like a glass of water?
Glass of water, please, yeah. On the wastewater side, Norm has posted his annual CSO report, made public notification. It is filed in the paper. And anybody that needs to get on that list that wants to be notified of that report can contact the plant down there and he will get you on the email list there. He's also had a application for Rule 5. This is at Heritage Crystal Clean. This is on their stormwater issues that might come up on the property. He has to go review and approval on that before they get their permits. So that's in place. They're doing their maintenance at the plant down there also, general maintenance, cleanup, repairs. Both plants are working well. So this kind of catches us up real quick. Not bad for three departments.
That's all?
That's it.
Thanks, Wendell.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendell.
Uh-huh.
Parks and Rec. Jacob, do you want to take this?
Yeah, Tammy can't be with here tonight. She just wanted me to pass along that they're working on the summer programming schedule as well as the summer concert series, getting bands lined up, getting donors lined up. So she's excited about it. Her first summer as a parks director and getting everything lined up. If you want, with your permission, Mr. President, I'll just move on to.
Town manager report, would you like to take that as well?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. President. So the first item I have, I'm actually going to ask for concurrence for landscaping contract as I'm sure we'll be reminded again before the end of this meeting, the next council meeting on the 26th, we've canceled that. But we did get some bids in to do the landscaping on Holm Memorial Way. We received three quotes to do that work. And this is work that is, it's not replanting things or anything, it's, it's the maintenance. It's, you know, there's a lot. Drive down sometime, really just appreciate how much landscaping, all the grasses and everything. It looks great, but it's a lot of work, especially, I mean, really through the year and certainly towards the end of the year. So we get some work, some, some help with that work. We contracted out. The lowest quote we received was from Vibrant Outdoors.
contracted out. The lowest quote we received was from Vibrant Outdoors. It is a quote this year for $74,976.14 to perform that work through the year. And we would ask for concurrence. Again, normally this would be something I just throw on the agenda. It's, obviously, it's, it's pretty straightforward, it's landscaping. But given that we got the quotes in, would really like to get that done before April, and they need to get things started. Would like to go ahead and just get that done and concurs tonight.
I concur. You have concurrence.
All right, great. Thank you. As far as approval, or as far as updates from me, sump pump program, we've talked about it before, and just the concern with folks that have their sump pumps hooked up to the sanitary sewer system, that is tough on the system. It's water that then needs to be treated, and it's, it's against ordinance, it's against state law. It's actually also against federal law. Not that the FBI is going to go knocking on anyone's door, but it is technically against federal law. So, but compliance and getting compliance is tough. A lot of folks, they want to comply, but they're just, they don't know how their system's hooked up. So, we're going to make a push to kind of document who has a sump pump and who's hooked up correctly. We're going to make an information push. We're going to have an intern over the summer that's going to help kind of set up that program and work towards getting folks compliant, getting information out. So, again, you know, we've had kind of some citizens' complaints. This can lead to potential backups in the system, so we want to get this correct. We want to get folks, folks hooked up correctly. And we're going to be kind of making a blitz here this summer to do so. As Wendell mentioned, I'll, I'll just tag on, I mean, with the, all the work that's going on on Main Street, we'd just ask folks to just be careful when you're going through there. We're burying lines, we're building the memorial, we're paving the BNO trail, we're building Willshaw. It's a really busy place, and it's, it's really great to see. But when you're in the area, just make sure you're, you're looking for, they'll have people directing traffic, they'll have, you know, just, just look out for what's going on. And if you cut through Main Street, just kind of getting from point A to point B usually, I agree, it's a great place, it's a really fun place to drive through, but maybe for the next couple of months, if you could find a different route instead of just driving through, we'd greatly appreciate that. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. Next up, report from our town attorney, Bob Clutter.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you for that relatively inexpensive report. Thank you.
Can I make a comment related to, to Bob? Had a chance to chat with him beforehand. I know it's been a tough couple of weeks with the police officer, or the sheriff deputy from Boone County, who was, who was killed in line of duty, to a student in the, in the school system in, within Boone County, to, to a counselor within Lebanon, I believe, who unfortunately committed suicide. All of these are close to Bob and where he lives. And the reason we hired Bob is because of the personal way that he treats his clients. We did reference checks, and I know these have been a tough couple of weeks. Just want to thank you for the work you do for us, and just mention that, that you're a quality person, and you represent your clients well.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah, well said. All right. Next reports for councilors. Eileen Fisher?
I have nothing this evening, please.
Counselor Jason Delisle?
Nothing for me.
Counselor Gary Rakes?
Said enough.
Vice President David Lindsay?
Nothing to report.
Well, I just want to remind people that we are, our next meeting will be Monday, April 9th. We're going to be off on the 26th, so, next Monday, Monday, April 9th. So, thank you all for attending. And on that note, it is 7:52. I adjourn this meeting.